Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Yep, you know, the next one is the insurance. How are you guys going on that?
We're good.
So we-
They did their due diligence and I think we, well, let's see, what's our next meeting?
It needs to be passed tonight, second if you want to meet, unless you want to call a special. The conversation with Mr. Nixon, he had spoke with the pool. Their feedback was that they had looked at basically every option available on the market, and this was their resulting recommendation. They had talked about there's some savings involved, some increases, but it looks like a net benefit.
Step get those, you want to have John send that off to you?
Right.
But they have over eight hundred municipalities in the pool.
Send this, it's just like a bullet list of points for the thing, so we can look it over, but we'll do a two and three on this, but you guys can just be, John will send out copies of their bullet points for this insurance and we can look it over.
And it is only a one year, so it's not a long term type of-
All right, thank you. Next is the public defender. Mark, do you want to talk about that?
Yes, you guys do this every year. It's sort of a housekeeping measure. It's just a contract with the county to provide indigent individuals with legal representation down in Stone.
Fantastic.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, the rate did go up a little bit. I think it's two ten now.
One, two, three on that, please?
Yeah, the lady's been bugging me.
Okay. Next is changing the compensation schedule for the, with the part-time police. Anyone want to talk about that?
We're just looking at ways to increase our liability. As you know, it's hard to getting people to do our profession anymore, so it just gives us another option to get qualified people in the door that are currently, can't be full-time employees due to either military engagement or college engagements, where we can at least get them, if they're good candidates, we can at least get them in the door, get them here, get them experienced at our department, apart from that capacity, with the hopes of, once they are freed up from whatever commitment they had, really bring them out full-time.
What was the previous level, what tier were they at? Is current, you changed it to eight?
So, way back when, the PD did use part-timers at some point that used ceased, and my guess is they were taken out of the non-union pay ordinance at that point in time.
Okay.
One, chapter one fifty-one has always had the ability to hire part-timers up to fifteen, so that's in the code currently, that's been there for a long time. Really, the only thing this is doing is reflecting that in the pay ordinance and setting a pay grade of pay grade A.
Okay. Any other questions on that, folks? Let's do one, two, three on that, so we can start the process. Appreciate it. Next is the road program.
Yeah, sorry, I was reading the report you gave. Yes, you guys have my memo, obviously, on this. Our low bidder is Roniak Davy, narrowly edging out specialized construction who've done the work for us for the last few years. As such, we're recommending award to Roniak. And as we've talked before, the last page of the memo is the list of roads to be paved. Well, one, two, three, please, so we can get moving.
And you said in the memo that they don't work. How long ago did they, did they do our streets or they don't have a project?
They did Highland Road Phase Two paving a couple of years ago. That's the big stretch from Valley View over to the Twin Third Quarter.
Okay. Any further questions on that, guys? Ask, one, two, three. All right, next, it was a motion that we added a little bit later, but Mark is going to explain what this motion is.
So this is a motion, you remember, we had some discussions about the city purchasing the ninety-one fifty Valley View property. Plans to convert that into a new service facility. We've gone back and forth with the current design build firm, and we need to go back to the drawing board a little bit. The takeaway from the conversation is there's not going to be any savings from maintaining an existing portion of the building retrofitting and maybe more pricey, actually. So it's clear that we need to demolish it. What this is, is to go out to bid, to receive bids to demolish the building or proposals to demolish the building. And that'll go through the competitive bidding process, which is the start.
The whole thing, we're not saving anything?
Correct.
So once, if this motion passes, then, then it'll go to public notice, right?
Yeah, so then Joe will probably work with our current design build criteria architect to develop plans and specifications, much like would happen for the road program when you guys decided to go out to bid for that. That will get advertised, there'll be a bid submission deadline, contractors will submit their proposals on that date, seal, it'll be opened at a eight certain, and then pick the lowest and best.
So anyone have any questions on this?
Now that we're doing the markets, are there going to be any other issues with the environmental and any parts of the ground?
It's too broad of a question for me to answer. We're still, we're still, we're good. Yeah, so that's, so that's an ongoing process. We have obligations with O E P A that we have to comply with, and we have to coordinate this kind of activity with them. So it's more coordinating. We are going to have to present them with our final construction plan to make sure we're not interfering with any of the groundwater wells that we have to monitor once a year. So it's more communication, more than anything. That answers your question.
I understand that's the best I'm going to get.
I mean, if you ask something specific you're wondering about, you know, I could-
No, I made the question apparently too broad.
I'll give you a little more specific question. At what point in the process do you think we could potentially learn if disturbing the soil is going to cost us more money? Is that way after demolition and once we start like digging footers and stuff?
So the main obligations right now are maintain a vapor monitoring system inside the structure. We've already let EPA a while back know that we wanted to at least demolish that portion of the building, so they're already aware. We want to remove that system. Now, so demoing the whole building shouldn't add a whole lot of attention, consideration to it. Outside of that, it's really monitor, the monitoring wells that are located around the property. It's testing those once a year, doing the sampling and looking at the results. Those are the main obligations, so outside of that, we can kind of do what we need to do on the property.
Okay. We won't know until we get a- I don't think we can expect Mark to know.
Mark doesn't work for the-
That's a typical, that's a typical lawyer response.
I don't think, I actually-
We were-
Circle law.
He doesn't know here. There's, there's two-
Not a circle well.
There's the two, we can't touch the wells, we can't touch the vapor monitoring system unless they okay it.
Got it.
I mean, it's the simplest-
So we go out to see how much it costs, and we decide yes or no to use them depending on the cause.
Yeah.
And what they're going to do, you know, you can't just say demolish it, you've got to talk about you remove it. What do you do? Can you let us know if they find anything dangerous?
So that'll be part of the bid, I assume?
Yes.
Is respecting the EPA stuff?
You could erase side package back saying this is what we'll do.
Yeah.
I've got one more. At what point, from a monetary standpoint, has this become a major boondoggle of what he's trying to do?
For what aspect?
From, I mean, before we were, the mark was about like seven million for a brand-new service.
It's not seven million.
I know, but at what point is it just too much? Or are we doing this come hell or high water?
We have, we have some opportunities that we're pursuing for grant money. We realize we can't do it probably without that. We would have to maybe do it in phases, but it's too early to tell. We should know more by summer, I think, on the grant application that I submitted earlier this week.
Because the demolition is going to tack on to that, the original seven million target. What do you think, well, either, what do you think tearing the building down is going to cost us?
I think-
We were already planning on demoing two-thirds of it. So how much is it going to tack on a- Do another tire thing? Probably it's not that significant, but we won't know the actual pricing until we get the bids, so.
But demoing it all allows you to place it where you want it to be placed.
It gives you a blank slate.
Don't forget the seven million price was pre-COVID.
Oh, I understand. But I'm, yeah, I'm sure that we've moved the price tag.
Yeah.
At one point, is this just get to be too much?
Yeah, like John said, it's a little bit too early. We're still trying to identify funding sources and things like that, so.
And we're aware, and the mayor doesn't want to do something if it's above our means.
All right, any further questions on this motion? All right, Vinnie will put up the motion and Dave will second it. Next, we have Mr. Rodick who wanted to talk about the sidewalk program.
Thanks. I want our council to know that we've identified the area that we're going to work in this year. And you can see it, you can see it, it's all in red in this area here. It'll consist of Ashford Drive, Crowe Drive, Crow Trail, Hampton Drive, and Sherwood Drive. There's going to be a hundred and three property owners that will be affected by this. It'll be about eleven thousand square foot of walk. But in addition to that, we're going to go ahead and modify twelve curb ramps to make them ADA compliant and actually add four more. So that's where it stands at. There's a courtesy, courtesy letter out to the hundred and three owners that was in the mail today. I'm going to give each one of you a copy, because I have my contact information on that, but I know that you'll be getting as many phone calls as I will. And we don't, and the letter kind of points out the purpose of the program, purpose of the marking of the walks. It lets them know that there is a responsibility of the owner of the property towards the sidewalks as far as maintenance goes. But it doesn't get into any detail about the program itself, because we're still developing a lot of the details with that. So the mayor wanted me to send out letters to these owners probably every two to three weeks just to keep them abreast of what's going on, so there wouldn't be any surprises. If you have any questions, I can-
Is Brookshire included in that? Brookshire, is Brookshire included in your original?
No, no, it's not.
Didn't hear it.
Only because of the hill, it's got a lot of bad sidewalks and the water. And the water is, it captures in a couple places, so that's not helping the sidewalks.
Yeah, we kind of, we're pinned down by estimating a budget. This is our first time doing this.
Right.
And it makes sense to make the program a little bit smaller in the beginning, so if there are errors, they don't become large-scale errors.
Crow is horrible, because that's the one that run along, but also on Brookshire. We've got several-
No, Brookshire-
Impact, well, I don't know.
Okay. I'm already thinking into next year's program. Because you've got to do this annually. And it would, you know, consist of some of the streets up here in Beechwood Meadows. Certainly a lot, but we considered that this year, but the road program is going to be there. That might have been too much for the people there. Brookshire West of Crow was another one that was really in bad shape in that area. But there's, there's some pretty various ones in there that are not so good. You've got to remember, these sidewalks are forty to forty-five years old. The homes in this area were built somewhere between eighty and eighty-two. And, and the cause that you're going to get the most about is going to be the trees. The trees, when I, when we did our voluntary program in two thousand twenty, that was the, the main point of things was the trees. But the trees are, and the city stands, the trees are the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. They're trimming the branches and the trunk and eventually the roots. Our program will actually manage to, will take care of the roots in a, in a, in a manner that will not do damage to the roots. So they'll do a, a cut, not a chop, down two inches below the pavemented area, put the basin, then the walk will go on top of that. But that's, I'm certain you're going to hear about the trees. That's, that's going to be inevitable. And again, if there's anything that you need help with in answering, or if you want me to just go ahead and do it, I'm, I'm happy to do it. I, I kind of did it with about eighty-five of the hundred and twenty property owners that we, we cited in our voluntary program in two thousand twenty. So a lot of these are going to be the same people.
What happens if the letter gets out on social media and other people outside of the area that you've tagged are interested in doing it and want to work through the city? Can they get in on the discounted concrete at all or not?
The, that would be, I think we're going to be set with our dollar amount that we award the bid to-
I meant if they were willing to pay for it.
Yeah, they could actually contact that contractor directly.
Okay.
And they might get, you know, the same price, just because once a contractor mobilizes, they're going to be there from beginning to end. So that, that's the advantage of using, you know, our contractor. But we haven't selected that contractor, we haven't put up the bid yet. So that will be coming in time.
That was thrown out to residents once before, he got practically no response.
Well, like, right, but when this letter starts coming out saying, I imagine the letter's going to be do-it-yourself or we're coming to do it, right?
It's, 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 it really doesn't, it's very soft.
Well, I didn't mean it's aggressive, but effectively.
It does kind of-
The code provides that out.
Yeah, but that option is out there.
It's like, go do it yourself if you want.
You can if you want, but we, at this time, we haven't established a timeframe that you need to have it done by, but eventually there will be. And then if they don't respond or they don't get it done, they will be automatically within the program itself.
So basically, if someone says, you know, my neighbors, it's terrible. Why didn't they get a letter to say it's just on this specific area, right? That's what people are going to say.
You're right.
My, the ones on my street are terrible, they need to be fixed. Like, well, they'll get a letter probably in the next couple of years.
It's a systematic program application.
Yeah, I, I figure it's going to take three years just to get out of Beechwood Meadows. Just because of the, the age of the homes and that. And once it moves beyond there, the other subdivision is not really too bad. You know, the, but this is by far, this subdivision in Rent. Rent is a really kind of a disaster walk. I think you have to kind of walk sideways in the wrong direction on that, some of that walk.
You know that property. In high school, I used to go catch frogs and things. It was wetland. It basically was nothing but water.
Yeah, it looks like someone did something the wrong way.
Yeah. It was, it's the rest of the neighborhood-
And then they built the development.
The rest of the neighborhood doesn't have sidewalks because it's full, and then they built this new house down there.
On Crow, and I said to my husband, no, this was all water and weeds and reeds. I need to move up.
All right, so any further questions on the program? So that letter went out today?
Yes.
Okay, so start-
So the phones will start ringing tomorrow?
Yeah, and then you'll send us a copy of it?
Yeah, I'll get your copy, yes.
All right, good.
You were sent out today, you're not going to, you're not going to hear-
On our tomorrow, that's not with our-
That's fine.
It'll be next Friday.
We'll send, we'll send everybody they have for questions.
All right, any further questions or any other discussion about today's agenda or meeting?
No, but I, can I ask something about the National Church residences?
Yes.
Where are the parcel numbers on Valley View?
What are the parcel numbers?
They're down by Northwoods, yeah.
Yeah, so it's based, the property-
Thanks for bringing that up, I forgot.
The property is in between, and Bob, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, Spring Hill, Northwoods, and Route Eight, essential. There's some vacant parcels of property right there, and that's where they're proposing to put this fifty-four unit senior living facility.
So is it closer to the Bowling Alley or is it the other way?
I don't know if we know that yet. I had a conversation with their attorney yesterday, and I asked some of those questions, and he is basically going to give me some additional information.
Where they're going to put it.
Yeah, do they have an actual site plan?
They actually, they do have a site plan, yes.
Do you recall answering that question?
There's actually a utility easement that runs between the Bowling Alley property and where the building will be. So it's going to be, I would say it's going to be staggering, the two parcels that are there.
Between the Bowling Alley and-
And the post office?
It's a dental?
Dental.
Or going the other way towards post office? Because going towards the post office is the zoo, people drive in and out.
It's the dental office.
They came to planning commission last month. Roughly where they'd like to place the building is in between Northwood Bowling Alley and Route Eight. That semi-wooded vacant property.
So the important thing for council tonight, you received this notice. So Planning Commission has the application. It's Planning Commission's job to review the proposal. I believe it's a conditionally permitted use. They'll look at the building. I've talked with Mr. Rodick, I've talked with Chief Gagopovich and as well as Chief Ripley. It seems like the main feedback right now is that there's some access concerns, particularly for fire and EMS of the facility. That should get worked out. Planning Commission, the other concern, obviously, there'll be an increase on safety service responses to the facility. I don't want to talk about that at all, but that's one of, one of the concerns, one of the likely impacts if the facilities place the properties.
Right, because your only access there is off of Valley View, right?
Yeah, was, was the access off of Valley View?
Well, it's a good thing I just looked at the property.
There's a, there'll be, there's a comic, there's an easement that goes behind the dental office across where the parking lot would be for the Bowling Alley, and then it would go to north to the site.
Well, that's a state, because there's a condo for sale back there, so I wanted to look at it. And there's a light back there.
Yeah, there is.
That's a touch and on.
What will that impact, and that's, they need to look, what will impact the water?
So that, that's, that's all stuff planning will work through in conjunction with Mr. Rodick and Mr. Roddy.
I mentioned it to my planning commission because-
What this notice is about is they're applying for funding from the state housing authority who they have, they are created and exist because of a public policy to encourage low-income housing development. So they're applying for funding, and you have the opportunity to object or provide comments to the housing agency. And if you want to do that, it needs to be signed by a majority of the legislative authority. And because of the timing, this got sent out, I think, February twenty-seventh. We didn't get the copy for quite some time, so we have thirty days to provide commentary. And I think it's, we can serve the objections on the director within forty-five days. But I would say if you want me to put a letter together, you need to let me know tonight. Basically, let me know what your comments are about it.
Yeah, I think there's some concerns. One is the water, two is the traffic. Are they going to come out of Valley View?
But is that relevant to the funding question?
Because Valley View-
So there's zero cases providing guidance on the statute.
Okay.
I think what typically happens is the public authority provides its comments, and then there can be a hearing, and then the agency does what it wants to do.
So we could bring up any point we want?
I think so, yeah. There's no restrictions in the code, definitely.
Yeah, because the access in and out are a real concern. Are they going to cut through into the development that's already there? Those people have the right to say so. Or if they're going to go into Valley View, okay, good luck.
Well, those, that's all private, all those developments are private. They're not dedicated roads.
Right.
Yeah, they're condos, basically.
They can't, unless they got them to agree to it, they wouldn't.
Yeah, they, you know.
They'd have to work something out.
And I, I do think a public hearing, if we can have one.
Well, the, the state agency would have the public hearing, not council.
Yeah.
You, the question is whether-
But they would have it here, so the residents can come answer questions.
I'm not sure whether it's happening.
Only because traffic is just a pistol.
So, I mean, typically, when any development moves in or any building or business, it doesn't come before a council. It's just a matter of this business, this development happens to be going for, through, through funding for the state. So I don't know, you know, if, if they decide to put, you know, a Dick's Sporting Good over there, will we have a public hearing just because we don't want to talk about it? Like, when Spring Hill got bigger and went in there, we didn't have a public hearing about whether or not we wanted Spring Hill Phases One or Two. So I don't know why we would object or have a hearing on this because, just, just because we can?
It's an apartment.
Yes.
It's not condos. It's an apartment building.
Yes.
So you'll have people coming and going like crazy.
And it's a zoning issue, right?
There's how many?
Yeah, that's a, that's a zoning issue.
Fifty-four apartments, that's fifty-four or a hundred and eight more cars coming in and out there, so. I think there's some things we need to look at.
Why would, why would, why would you double them, automatically just double the amount of cars going in and out?
There's two people that live there.
I said fifty-four or a hundred, be up to a hundred and eight. Most people have two cars.
Not if, if you're alone.
If you're lucky, you have one car if you're in the local.
And are we going to move the bus to go over there? No, on the state. No, on the county. We might want to find out if they're going to move the bus over there. Because if these are people that don't have cars, they need a way to get to places.
They won't be able to tell you that in time.
I think we should ask. Are you adding the bus route for there?
It's not up to them. It's not up to them.
No, I'm asking some accounting, the bus people.
So, does anyone, I personally am not interested in, in objecting to this writing as a legislative body, having, having Mark say something to the state. Is anyone else pushing for that?
Objecting to it?
Pushing for Mark writing a letter of objection for the state. So the, the planning issues you have will be, you know, covered in, in Planning Commission. But, you know, it's, it's, it's a special, it's, we don't, you know, just get to vote on whatever, whoever moves in there. It's just a happenstance that we, that we could possibly object to it, but I'm, I'm not in favor of objecting it. But if anyone else wants to, you know, come up with objections and work with Mark on it, we'd have to vote on it.
So what I, what I would recommend, if you do want me to draft a letter, what I would say is make a motion on the floor, include the subject matters of the objections that you have. Then if it's, there's a second, then you can do a roll call. And if it passes, then it passes, and I'll draft a letter with those subject matters and then have you guys sign it. Identify those subject matters for objection.
So that being said, Jan, if you want to, you can do that under new business or motions, if you'd like. All right? But thank you for bringing that up. That was something that we were going to talk about, and I totally forgot.
Do you know if they own all those lots?
I don't.
Because it could be they don't own them yet. Does it wait to see if they get the funding from the state?
If I'm not mistaken, the person that does own them has a firsthand hand in the development of that area. I received a call on this two months ago.
And to your knowledge, does this fit, does this use case fit the zoning or would it need a variance? If you know.
I can't really talk about that at this point in time. I'll say Planning Commission is treating it as a conditionally permitted use. I think is R two or, or B two or B three does allow for senior living facilities as conditionally permitted uses. Traditionally, that means if you're a conditionally permitted use, there are certain conditions that can be opposed prior to a permit being granted. So they're going through that process, and that's kind of a planning topic.
Yeah, got it. Okay.
All right, guys, we got to get out there. It's our twenty-eighth.
Did we cancel next meeting?
Yes, we did officially like two meetings ago, I think.
Did we do it?
Did we do it?
Yeah. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the March 14th, 2024 regular council meeting. Mr. Hoover, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Brand.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Ms. Graves.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
And now please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance from Mr. Tom O'Brien, the chaplain.
Esteemed council members, department heads and fellow citizens, as we gather here this evening, let us first pause to acknowledge the privilege and responsibilities entrusted upon us to serve the greater good of our city. May our deliberations be guided by wisdom, compassion, and a commitment to fairness, ensuring that every decision reflects the collective aspirations and needs of all residents. Let us embrace diversity as our strength and unity as our beacon, fostering an inclusive environment where voices from every corner of our city are heard and valued. As we embark on this session, let us remain steadfast in our dedication to fostering growth, prosperity, and sustainability for our city. Let our actions be driven by a vision of a city that thrives economically, socially, and culturally, where opportunities abound for all its citizens. May our discussions be marked by civility, mutual respect, and a spirit of cooperation, recognizing that together we can overcome challenges and realize the full potential of our beloved community. With humility and determination, let us commence this meeting mindful of our duty to uphold the trust and competence bestowed upon us by the citizens we serve. Amen. And now, Councilor Brand, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. We appreciate it. All right, next we have the approval of minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the February 22nd, 2024 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Dipstane.
All right, next we have public comments. If you could please come up to the podium and let us know your address. You have a maximum of five minutes per person. First is Ted Nester.
Thank you. We have a neighbor, some of my other neighbors are here, moved in two years ago and it's been nothing but garbage in the yard since. They've been parking trucks in the yard and they sit there for months. There was a rider truck there about 10 months ago, big box.
What's your address?
1020 Brookpoint.
Brookpoint, thank you.
That address is 1051. 950? Oh, I'm sorry. But there's, if you go by there now, the back door, the overhead door on this big box trucks that's been there for eight months and hasn't moved, there's garbage falling out the back. There's lumber laying on the side of the grass. They cut around it because they, you know, they're not moving it. Now there's pallets in front of the garage. I see they're getting a big pile of boxes in front again. It's just, and another thing is her dog, she's the only person in the neighborhood that won't pick up her dog's droppings. And I asked Mr. Ventura to come out. He took pictures. That was a few months ago. From, it's my understanding that she was asked, I sent a letter and she didn't respond to it and she'd been summoned to court twice and she didn't show up. And now there's supposed to be a warrant out for her, what, a bench warrant? And she really don't care. And I don't want my neighborhood turning into Maple Heights or Garfield because that's not the way we're out here. So something needs to be done. If she doesn't have, you know, now there's a bench warrant and nobody's going to do anything and just let it go on, there's a problem. Somebody's got to be able to do something.
The truck is still there today.
Oh, it's there and she, matter of fact, she happens to be there now. Because that was the other thing we got, she's never there.
Chris, Inspector, is right on top of this, working with the police department. That's how she got cited twice. She didn't show up either time. So I was going to talk to him tomorrow since the truck is, I go up the street. Every other day, you'll see the white VW, that's me, seeing if the truck is still there because Robin on the corner and Mayor Cooked up, and everyone's not happy with this. So if you could check with the chief, I don't know where they were at with this, but I know she didn't show up for the last two that she got cited. I see her outside once in a while.
Yeah, like I said, they said they couldn't catch her at home while she's there now. She's most nights, most nights she's not there. I have no idea what's going on at that place.
Well, the only thing they did is they took all the big boxes and finally got rid of them, but they left the giant truck.
Right, well, this is the second big box truck that was there. Then they had these big duly pickup trucks there. But, yeah, it's getting out of hand. Unfortunately, I don't have to come out my door and look at all this, but my neighbors here do.
Yep. Mr. Goodaddy, what's the process once a warrant has been issued?
Warrant's issued and if they get picked up on the warrant, they get picked up on the warrant. So it's just a matter of time. Unfortunately, that's the primary enforcement method for this type of situation. Sometimes people get picked up in a day, sometimes a year, sometimes never. So it just kind of depends on where that individual's located.
Well, the other thing I ask Chris, is it possible for us just to tow the truck away? If you're not going to comply with the rules and the laws, you've been warned several times. Can we just tow the truck out of there?
There's a rather intricate revised code, set a lot of sections of the revised code that talk about wind towing authorized, so I'd have to look at the specific facts to give you an answer on that.
Well, if you're looking for, she drives a black Escalade. And she usually comes around around between 12 and 2, if she comes around.
What would be the remedy? Would she just be fined? I mean, would we be able to compel her to clean up the?
Well, it sounds like she's been cited in a court, so it'll get handled by the magistrate and by our city prosecutor.
And she can be compelled to clean up, assuming that that's what the city is looking to have done?
So I don't know the facts of the specific case, so I can't tell you that. But typically, when you have a housing enforcement action, the main goal is to have the conditions that are violating the code remedied. Now, that can come with sentencing and fines and things of that nature or not. So it's really up to the prosecutor and the magistrate in the coming days.
Yeah, she's been cited twice. Chris is taking care of it as the city inspector.
We had a neighbor at 1040 and he, she, he got cited the same time she did. They sent a letter out and he only had a couple of pieces of equipment on the side of his house from work and he cleaned everything up. No reason she can't.
Thank you, Mr. Nester. We have several other neighbors from the same thing. Did you all want to, your turn to speak? Go for it. Yes, thank you. Let us know your name and your address.
Okay, I'm Mary Ellen Cherabasi and I am at 1001 Brookpoint Drive. I guess this question is for the police chief. If we see her walking down the street, should we call the police department and have somebody come out and pick her up that way?
We can call, and we can come out there and talk to her and if the warrant is selected, we can arrest her.
Okay, so how long is the warrant good for, I guess?
It's good forever until it's taken care of through the courts or something.
Okay, so the next time we see her walking down the street, we can call you? And you'll come out and?
If there's an officer available, then we can get them over there before she gets into her house yet.
What's the address?
Was it 1051?
Oh, 951.
951?
Oh, yes. I'm at 1060.
Is it 1060, 950?
The house in question is 950?
951.
Hi, I'm Jean Finley. I live at 1010 Brookpoint. When I had called and talked to whatever the representative was for the building, wherever they transferred me to, and I was advised that she didn't show up for two subpoenas or whatever. And she missed her court dates. There's a bench warrant. I don't understand exactly what a bench warrant is, but I was told by that individual, I said, she is over in the house. She, she's parked in the driveway right now. Why can't someone come and arrest her? I was told, we can't, our hands are tied. I don't understand this at all. I don't understand how these people can move in. And what is very alarming to me is there are people that come and go out of that house randomly. I wouldn't be surprised if she's running drugs out of there. I really wouldn't. Your mind just go, I don't even understand how this has been allowed to happen for all this time and nothing has been able to occur to warrant this, to resolve this situation at all. Any answers?
I'm not familiar with the police process.
So I don't recommend talking about an active prosecution in the context of a council meeting. We're all not aware of the specific facts or charges. You've heard what we discussed with the warrants and how that process generally works. There's obviously charges pending and a warrant out based on what you guys are saying. That will get handled through the court process in accordance with our code. That's about as much as I can tell you about it right now.
I've been told, we're working on it. Well, it's been.
10 months.
Is it 951 or 1051?
10.
No.
I'm at 1061.
1051?
Yeah, she's 10.
She's delinquent on her sewer and sanitary taxes.
Really, all we want is that box truck moved, the yard cleaned. What happens to her, I could care less. I'm concerned about what is happening, what is going in and out of that house? This box truck's sitting there for all this time. I'm sorry, this is unacceptable.
Thank you. Anyone else on the list want to speak? All right, thank you for coming and speaking.
I would.
Go ahead.
Counsel President, I would just like to thank you all for showing up, being here and voicing your concerns. This is the way things get done. So often people do not show up. They don't get their questions answered the way you did tonight. Okay, now it is brought to the attention of some of the people that can follow up on this. Okay, so again, thank you for showing up in your group, for your neighborhood. Thank you.
Next we have correspondence to the clerk.
None, Madam President.
All right, we'll move on to pending a new legislation, ordinance number 13.
Madam President, I'd like to offer ordinance 13, 2024 for its second and third reading by title only.
Second. I can't hear because it's.
You're going to just leave this on second, right? I thought it was second and third.
No, eight was the one that we were going to leave on second. So we're going to 13. We're going to do second and, I did my part, right? All right.
Are we good with that, Mr. Finley?
13.
You ignored it. I did what you said.
Thanks, bud. All right, so 13 by title only. She's second, yeah, she did, yes.
I already did.
Yeah.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a one-year contract with Ohio Plan Risk Management, Inc. for certain insurance coverage for the city of Macedonia beginning April 1st, 2024.
So this is our insurance pool for the city. Our previous pool that we were a part of is no longer. So we were recommended a new pool by the people who ran the old pool and they've had some, the city's had some time to look it over and it looks like a good plan. It should be a wash when it comes to costs, so we hope to get that instated by April 1st if this pass. Anything further to add on this? What's the name of the pool?
The Ohio Plan Risk Management. Yeah, and there's over 800 municipalities in the state part of this pool, so pretty financially sound.
All right, thank you. What's your pleasure?
Madam President, I would move that we pass and post according to law ordinance 13, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, ordinance 13 passes. Let's see if we can do this one better. Ordinance 19.
I move to offer ordinance number 19, 2024 for all three readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Summit County Public Defenders Commission for the representation of indigent persons charged with violations of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia.
This is something that we sign up for or we approve every year, just so people coming into our jail have the right to have public defenders through the county. There's a slight cost increase this year. It's an hourly cost of $210 an hour. Basically, what we call this housekeeping. Anything else you want to add, Mr. Goodaddy?
No, Counsel President.
All right, so what's your pleasure?
I move to offer ordinance number 19, 2024 and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, ordinance 19 passes. Ordinance 20.
Yes, Chair, I'd like to offer ordinance 20, 2024 for its first, second, third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance establishing the current compensation schedule for the non-union employees of the city of Macedonia, Ohio.
This is just adding a, do you want to talk about this, Senator Costello?
It's just adding the ability for us to hire part-time police officers, officers that may not be able to currently work a full-time schedule, but we want to get them the ability in attempts to hire them full-time, so it just gives us the ability to bring them on a part-time basis.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? All right, what's your pleasure?
I move to offer and adopt 20, 2024 and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, ordinance 20 passes. Ordinance 21.
I'd like to offer ordinance 21, 2024 for its first, second, third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Roniak paving, Inc. for the 2024 road program.
Mr. Delotti?
Yeah, we're recommending Roniak paving for this year's road program contract. For the record, the roads to be paved this year, Apache, Blackhawk, Cessna, Bendleton, Sensory, Deepwood, Riverview, and both Lawton North and Lawton South.
Any further comments on this? All right, what's your pleasure?
I would like to move that we pass and post according to law ordinance 21, 2024.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, ordinance 21 passes. Any other motions or legislative actions?
Yes, Madam President, I'm going to offer, make a motion to authorizing the city engineer to prepare plans, bids, specifications, and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids to demolish the building located at 9150 Valley View Road, Macedonia, Ohio.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Goodaddy, do you want to say anything about this?
So this is part of a long-term project to adapt the 9150 Valley View property, which a lot of the residents may know as the old Aerosol facility, which is basically set. a lot of the residents may know as the old Aerosol facility, which is basically set vacant for a long time and convert that into potentially a new service facility. This would authorize us to go out to bid pursuant to competitive bidding laws to demolish the building.
All right, thank you. And that motion has carried. Next is the mayor's reports. I did not get any notes from the mayor. The mayor is at the Winter Athletic Awards at the high school, so congratulations to all those athletes who are getting awards. I also want to say congratulations to the band and the choir that both get superior ratings at their competitions. Congratulations to, I think, boys bowling did quite well, and girls bowling did quite well. And everyone who did sports this year. We had a really great semester of sports in Nordonia. And please put your phones down, don't drive distracted, don't text and drive.
Got that, right.
Next is committee reports, and I don't have a committee report, I'm just going to pass on it. Any other committees? Next. Go for it.
Mark, do we need to have another jet meeting?
Yes. Right now, we're waiting for Northfield Center Township to pass their resolution for the land addendum. And once I get word that that's been completed, then we'll send a jet meeting.
Okay, so we're just waiting on them?
Yep.
Got it.
Thank you. Any other committee things? All right, next is department reports, service departments. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam President. I have my report.
You missed awards for that, huh?
You could make this a cast this meeting.
All right, engineering, Mr. Gelati?
Could have went to the awards night if that's all you were going to do, Dan. In all seriousness, thank you to council for passage of Resolution 21 tonight, so we'll get the contracts going with Roniak paving, and we'll report back as soon as we have a schedule on this year's paving work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Chaddick?
Thank you, Madam President. I will make it worthwhile for me to be here skipping the award ceremony. Thanks to council on our approval at the last meeting, we have now posted our bids for both the pool deck project that will take place, as well as the multipurpose fields at Longwood North. So those bids are posted right now. We'll bring them back at the next council meeting to try to get a contractor in place to move forward. We have an interesting situation with our activity pool. It's theoretically, it's closed right now. If you want to swim in 75-degree water, go ahead. It's nice and cool for you. We are getting new firewall to put into that heater. It's been on order, it's coming in from California next week at some point. So with that, we're going to try to also get the pool surface redone in the activity pool, because that was scheduled to get done this year. We were going to try to do it during our HVAC shutdown, so we're actually going to try to bump that up so we can just drain the pool now if we are able to get the product. We'll find that out tomorrow, I think, if we're going to be able to do that project for next week. So might get an advantageous opportunity to get a project done a little bit early while we wait on a firewall for our heater. So just want to update you guys on that. We hope to have the activity pool up and going again about the next week. Thank you.
I have a comment. I've been meaning to tell you about this, and you brought it up and reminded me.
Oh, great.
The temperature, yeah, the temperature of the pool's been actually a pretty popular topic on social media. But somebody posted something really interesting. Some other community in some other state has temperature sensors in their pool, and they take that temperature reading and they put it up on their equivalent of their city or their recreation center webpage, so that people that are going to head up to the pool can just check and see what the temperature of the pool is.
I saw someone posted that.
Yeah, I just thought I'd mention that to you, because it seems like a relatively inexpensive thing we could do and probably get up on one of the two webpages if not both of them.
Potentially, yeah.
I just thought I'd mention it, so good luck with that heater, because it sounds like it's.
And I do want to let everyone know, we've had a contractor out six times, so it's, and it's been up and running all six times, and then went out again all six times. So.
It's tripping itself. It's not even an old heater.
The safety feature on it is tripping itself, and it's because a part that goes into the heat exchanger actually blew out, which was a warranty issue. So Jim Clark, our aquatics supervisor, is actually running ragged on this project. So when we get the negative feedback from the community, it doesn't help the situation. We know there's a problem, we're trying to fix it.
Right.
So yeah, we saw the social media postings, they were rather interesting to read through.
I just thought the temperature one was a good positive suggestion that could potentially be done.
Usually, we're spot on, so it doesn't matter. This is literally an item that's broke.
Makes sense.
So that's why we never.
Presumably, if you fix it, this won't be an issue for years to come.
Yeah, it is a good idea, though, especially with our old systems that we had, because those actually did fluctuate one to two degrees on the differential. These ones are not supposed to. But it is a good idea, we'll look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Department, Mr. Vares?
You should have went to the awards banquet and get home 15 minutes earlier.
I feel the love here.
We're hot and heavy into the Macedonia Resident Refund Program. We probably have over 200 of them that we processed this week. Due date is July 15, unless your Rita return is extended, and we will honor that extension date. End of my report.
Thank you. Director Collins?
Thank you, Madam President. 21 helped us ticket since the last council meeting. Major projects of concern has been security, both physical and digital. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you. Building Department, Commissioner Roddick?
Thank you, Madam President. On the development front, Northam Rack is scheduled to open on April 11th. They're currently staging and stocking and will be training employees very soon. Sephora is planning to open in late April as well. Both have signed packages coming before the planning commission on Monday. And as a code update, on March 1st, the Ohio Board of Building Standards adopted the 2004 Building Mechanical and Plumbing Codes, as well as the 2003 National Electrical Code, which is the most recently published edition of the National Electrical Code. And this is the first significant update of code since 2017. In addition, the Board of Building Standards has found that approximately 80% of permitted non-residential work occurs in existing structures that are being repurposed, and therefore adopted a brand-new code entitled "The Existing Building Code," which will apply specifically to existing structures. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Quite an update on all of electricity. All right, next, HR, Mrs. Smith isn't here. Fire Department Chief, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Dan, I texted your wife to let her know what your report was tonight. Lithium-ion battery training, we had it, bad day training, it's actually the fire chief out of Brexville runs a large training company. Lithium-ion battery fires are huge, and a huge problem for us, they don't go out because of the chemicals inside the batteries. So we did training to learn how to deal with them more effectively. They have fires that are starting three weeks after they originally put out, because they go into a thing called thermal runaway. Chris D. Young, our communications specialist, has posted some stuff on our website about lithium-ion batteries. One thing you want to be careful of, we all go on Amazon, you can look at a battery and go $100 or $35. We all want to buy the $35 battery. Odds are, that battery is not U.L.-listed, and everything that's U.L.-listed is marked, and that is something you certainly want to pay attention to in this, because there's a big problem with those who are not U.L.-listed, so just being a watch for that. The eclipse is coming on April 8th. Please enjoy it. We're planning for it, we're hoping it's not an issue, but I will tell you that we have learned that all of the hotels in this area are booked solid. So that tells you people are traveling. So don't plan for any quick trips that day, I wouldn't think, but we are prepared for it in case that happens, and we're going to move forward. I'm sorry?
An Airbnb.
They're offering $500 a night, there you go.
Yeah, box truck that you can sleep in.
Moving on, I just also want to point out that according to my phone, just told me that there's severe storms heading our way with large hail at 8:30, Madam President.
Speaking of time, there's a time change this weekend.
Oh, yeah, there's a time change, she always has to remind me of that. So change the batteries in your smoke detectors. That'll happen as soon as we change the clock up here, so thank you, Madam President, again.
Lieutenant Costello, the police department?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. In the absence of Chief Yakapowicz, the only thing we have is more of a congratulations. One of our dispatchers last shift was last night, Karen Nelson. She retired after 13 years as a dispatcher for the city, so she will be missed. And also, this week, our SRO, Officer Amy Daly, spoke to kindergarten through fourth-grade students at the Longwood branch of the YMCA's after-school program, specifically relating to cyberbullying, safe searching, online stranger danger, and personal information protection. So that was well received there, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Director Goodetti?
Just a quick update, we previously discussed car wash, mattress, and tire shops. The city did move forward in having a study performed, so that's underway. The time estimate to get a report and recommendations from the firm is six to eight weeks, so we'll keep council updated as that proceeds.
Thank you. Thank you for spearheading that for us. All right, any unfinished business? Any new business?
A quick one has. There have been plans made for the eclipse. I can see that the park and across the street, even though it's golf, so my concern is, have we planned together how to monitor, how to, you know, are we allowing anybody and everybody in? And I know we still got a couple weeks, but if we could get something out to the public to let them know.
We have.
Some streets are going to be crowded, 82, I just see a giant crowd. I plan on being there. I saw the last one down on South Carolina on the beach. Yeah, up here, I don't know if we'll see it or we'll see clouds, but if you could work something together, we can get it out, post it online, it'd be appreciative.
We are certainly planning for all of those things you mentioned. There is extra staff, and there's going to be a law enforcement presence and service workers in the park to facilitate parking so that we can manage the most amount of people that we possibly can. Thought process being is the more people we get into parking lots, that means less vehicles on the road. We've heard of reports in the past that those who can't find parking, once it starts, they just stop their car, sit on the hood, and they're in the middle of a four-lane road. Law enforcement's going to be well aware of that, and that will not be occurring in our city, or it will only be occurring until law enforcement can get there. So yeah, we are planning for it. Social media responses, we've discussed the fact we don't really want to attract people to the city. They're already going to be here, but we certainly could say that the parks are open. All three of the parks will be staffed. Hope that answered your question?
Thank you. Any further new business? I have a motion to adjourn.